Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of January 22nd, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
And Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here, and to all those who are watching online, welcome. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Kevin Bradford, who's the pastor of Greater Bakersfield First Pentecostal Church, to lead us in the invocation. Thank you to both of you for being here tonight, and we thank you also for bringing solutions to the city. Recently, I met with Pastor and Mrs. Bradford, and they saw the need for maybe some beautification from the Garsis Circle to Columbus where their church is located, and they brought some ideas rather than just yelling at us. So really appreciate that. Thank you so much for your care about education, just your church's investment in preschool and a school, and your service to the community. Following the invocation, we're glad to have Jacob Baldovinos, who's a junior at Garsis Memorial High. He's going to lead us in the pledge, and Jacob serves as the mayor's alternate youth commissioner. He's the starting point guard as a junior for the Garsis varsity team, and he plans to pursue college. He's going to major in business and entrepreneurship. He's got a passion for serving those who are less fortunate in our community and mentoring upcoming basketball players. And he's here with his parents, Carlos and Amy Baldovinos, who are both, Carlos is the head of the mission at Kern, and I think Jacob, from the womb even before you came out, you were already serving our most vulnerable. Would you all please stand?
Thank you, Mayor. I came to Bakersfield in 1992 from Minot, North Dakota. It was a very good change, and I've served at Greater Bakersfield's Pentecostal Church since that time. Our church has been in the community for 82 years, and this is the first time I've ever been in a city council meeting, so I appreciate your invitation to come here today and offer an invocation. So let's pray. Savior, we thank you for your blessing and your goodness. We thank you for the mayor and these city council members that are here today. We ask that you would direct us and guide us and know that you provide to us an opportunity for understanding, knowledge, and direction, and so I pray that your blessing would be upon each and every one of them in every decision that they make, but not only on the decisions that they make, but I pray that the decisions that they make are not menial but have an impact and an uplift to our community. We thank you for an opportunity to serve, and we pray that the same creativity that you have given in life and in nature you also put within each and every one of us, and that your anointing and ability would flow in this council meeting tonight. And we ask all of these things in your great name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Jacob. And if any of you are looking for some special items that Jacob offers through his special entrepreneurial venture, reach out to him. He's got good deals for you, whatever those might be, basketball shoes and the like. And now he's going to actually play in a basketball game or practice. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. In keeping with council's resolutions, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in a tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time. If public statements become disruptive, and I've declared the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received five speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Cindy Para.
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
And Vice Mayor Cor, and council members and staff. I'm Cindy Para. I'm on 18th Street, and I just wanted to thank the council and staff for their continued commitment to providing safe infrastructure for pedestrian and cyclists. The new bike lanes, the green paint that's been put down, the ATP that was approved on the earlier council today. I just wanted to thank you all for your commitment to bringing these types of infrastructure to our city, to continue to allow folks to have better spaces to bike and to walk. So that's all I wanted to say, so thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Para. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Matthew Dills.
Please introduce yourself, and go ahead and raise the mic, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Matthew Dills. I lived here most of my life. I teach at Stockdale High School. I just want to thank you guys, first of all. I'm a big fan of Bakersfield, and I think we do a lot of good things here, and a big one is the bike lanes. I'm a full-time bike commuter. I have been for 15 years, biked to work. I feel like I can now advocate for my students' safe routes and not feel like I'm putting them at jeopardy, and that's huge, because I promote biking all the time in my classroom. And again, I love what we do here. It's special, and I've biked all over the planet, and this is, what we're doing here is very wonderful, I think, for everybody, and yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Smith.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Smith. I have kind of a ridiculous question. I'd like to find out if I can make a city code enforcement complaint for city properties. I've been here for four years, roughly, asking for help. You all built a freeway through one of the highest minority, lowest-income neighborhoods in metro Bakersfield and then ignored us. 14 leftover lots now fall within Andre Gonzalez's ward and are being ignored. Here's the problem: The contractor is gone. Greg Strakelous, who had a deep understanding of the area, is gone. The city's only plan is to hurry up and sell those lots, but that isn't happening, and your own people say it could be years. Until then, you wait for the citizens to call, you help, and then you go away until we call again. Why are we bearing the responsibility for reporting issues on your property when you're the ones with the legal duty to maintain it and keep it from being a nuisance? Some of these lots have been covered with manure. Fencing is inadequate. It's been cut. Locks are missing. Gates are open. Homeless people are trespassing and camping, using drugs, defecating out in the open. Dirt and grass and weeds had covered sidewalks and gutters. School walkways are crumbling, and more. I've had contact from Zach Meyer, who's been extremely kind and responsive to me. He actually went out and met me at this manure-covered lot, several of them, and toured the area with me in the last 30 days. I think it's fair to say that he was very concerned, and I think we were both overwhelmed by what we saw and heard, but mostly what we smelled. Gilbert Vega always responds, but he's an engineer, and for God's sake, why is he inspecting properties? In the last eight months, the only email I've gotten from Renee Williams is an auto-generated out of the office. You have park rangers within feet of these properties who could patrol them daily and make reports, and you could use private security, and you could use code enforcement inspectors. You could do more. Please do it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your comments today. It's good to see you, and I'm glad to hear that city staff has been working with you and walking the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, for your time in this. I can assure you, though, that we have not forgotten about the neighborhood. I have not forgotten about the neighborhood, or those lots. Those are remnant parcels, as you know, from the Sentinel Corridor project, and there have been a number of conversations that we've had at City Hall to address those particular lots. I am with you. I want those lots gone. I want them to, I want to see a more productive use for those lots, and so, but please, I don't want you to leave here tonight thinking that those issues have been forgotten. They have not. In fact, Mr. Helen, I see that you're in the city manager's chair. If you want to maybe provide some context a little bit for Ms. Smith and the rest of the community who deserve to know exactly what our plans are for those remnant parcels.
Sure. I can't recall exactly all of the 14 parcels that Ms. Smith is talking about, but I can give kind of a general overview of some of the plans on some of those parcels. We will be selling some of those parcels to the neighboring property owners based on Caltrans guidelines, because some of them are too small to develop, and so, per Caltrans, because this was a Caltrans project, those will be sold first to neighboring property owners, and then some of the larger lots will go through the Surplus Land Act to sell those.
And I think it should also be noted, and for what it's worth, and maybe not much to some people who are really concerned, but the lots are actually owned by TRIP, and they're actually not the property of the City of Bakersfield. The city actually is the lead agency of TRIP, but there are federal guidelines that we must follow in order to disperse of those properties. Correct? Am I off?
That is correct.
Okay. And so with that, you know, it is, I think, unfortunately, far more complex for us to resolve this matter, hence the amount of time it's taken, but I want to, again, reaffirm that we are committed, I am committed, to seeing this resolved. All that said, I think there are issues with those lots in terms of maintenance, and cities should bear that responsibility, so I just make again the referral that we continue to monitor these sites and be better neighbors, because we are responsible, but let's be better neighbors for those residents in West Park. Thank you so much, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Can you keep the manure off the lot? Maybe sweep that off soon?
I can, I'll find a pickup truck, and I'm just kidding.
Madam, Madam City Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor Go, we still have two speakers.
Sorry, next speaker, that's what I meant.
Bert Elton.
Please introduce yourself. Can you just raise that mic for him? A little bit, please.
My name is Bert Alton.
Let's restart the timer. Welcome, and please introduce yourself. Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, and welcome. Please introduce yourself. We're just raising the mic for you.
Yeah, my name is Bert Alton. I've lived in Kern-Crowley for over 60 years, and I'm a veteran, two years in Vietnam, and I would like to commend this body on the bike paths that you put, and I am legally blind, and the colors, the green and the yellow, and everything that you guys use on it makes it a lot safer for people like me who is visually impaired, and I hope that this body will keep up the good work and invest in more bike lanes and bike paths. My bike is my sole transportation, like someone's car is their transportation, and I'd like to see a little bit more bike lanes get in, such as like Buck Owens Boulevard, because I do business down there, and I knew other, I know other people that do business down there, and I just hope that this body will keep up the good work and put in more bike lanes, and that you guys have done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alton, and thank you for your service to our country. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Brittany Brim.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brittany Brim. I'm from, I've been in Bakersfield for my whole life, born and raised. I have a solution for the City of Bakersfield. I don't know if you have noticed, I would like to, I wanted to talk, I like to present to you the Waymo, Waymo self-driving cars. So I'm going to tell you what the Waymo, about Waymo is. Waymo is an autonomous vehicle, Waymo is an autonomous driving technology company, has millions to be the world's most trusted driver since, since our start, the Google Self-Driving Cars Car Project in 2009. Waymo has been focused on building the Waymo driver, the world's most experienced driver, driver TM, improve everyone's access to mobility while saving thousands of lives now, now lost to traffic crashes. In America, there's a lot of accidents, there's accidents happening in America. There's Waymo, there's, there is a Waymo in, Waymo is serving in Phoenix, Arizona. There's, and there's two of them in California, which is Los Angeles and San Francisco, and pretty soon it'll be, it'll come up, come out in Austin, and Miami, and Atlanta, Georgia.
Thank you, Ms. Brim. Your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay.
Just like another sentence, please.
Okay. And in closing, I would like for all of the Bakersfield council members to get in, to get involved with, with Waymo, with Waymo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brim. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to comment on all the speakers, really. I do think that the future is self-driving cars, and cars will be safer, and it will end up saving all the lives that we lose now. I just, yesterday I got the latest fatal traffic collisions in Bakersfield for the last year, and we lost 44 of our citizens last year in Bakersfield to fatal traffic collisions. Half, exactly half of those did not include a bicycle or pedestrian, just straight vehicle deaths, and the other half, 22, were bicycle and pedestrian. So in the meantime, until cars have a mind of their own and know not to hit people, then we will continue to build safer streets, as talked about with the wider bike lanes and the more visible paint, the green paint, and the yellow, and more bike paths and better sidewalks, and that's our goal, is to save lives in Bakersfield, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Ms. Brim, your time is up, so we're going to ask you to sit down at this time, and Councilmember Arias has comments. Thank you for speaking. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to speak on many of the speakers that have come forward today, but particularly, I believe it was Mr. Bert who came up. I am just so moved by your testimony, and I just want to say thank you for your service to this country, but also thank you for coming up to speak with us and share your lived experience, and how the decisions that we make on a daily basis and the improvements that we attempt to make throughout the city make a difference in your life. And I didn't know you before tonight, but I want you to know that there are many members of the council, including myself, who have had someone like you in our minds as we prepare these policies to improve the road conditions throughout the entire city, so it's just an honor to get to meet you, and I'll admit, over the past year, this, my colleagues and I have received a lot of flack. There are many members of our staff who have had many tough conversations with folks, but the data remains true. Reduce the width of our lanes, our traffic lanes, and increase the amount of bike lanes that we have throughout this community. So we know what the solution is, we just got to continue to go down that path, so I just want to say thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Ms. Brim, thank you so much for your comments. I really appreciate them. I've had an opportunity to see these autonomous vehicles up close, and it's, it's pretty interesting. You know, I was remembering, when I was a kid, I asked my aunt what she did for a living when she was younger, because she told me she worked, and she said she was the elevator operator, and I thought that was the weirdest thing, but back in the day, they used to have elevator operators. In order to get into an elevator to ride it, you required somebody, and then they created these automated elevators. They didn't require an attendant, and everyone, there's a lot of people apparently who were pretty scared to actually enter and ride an elevator without an attendant, so it was a cultural shift, and I think this, we're about, as a society, we're about to enter this new shift, this disruption, where we see a lot of these autonomous vehicles. I'm not the car expert. My colleague, Councilmember Bashir Tash, is, so I don't want to get into a conversation about what's in the future, but I do think your point is well-taken, and what I hear from you in what you're saying is that increased access to mobility for all of our citizens is what should be a top priority for us, and we should pursue all different options, and I am right there with you. So thank you so much for speaking tonight.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for this portion? Sorry, Councilmember Cor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to join my colleagues in thanking all of the community members who've joined this evening, this Wednesday evening, to give thanks, but I want to give my thanks to all of you. It is in our subcommittee meetings, it is in your individual advocacy, that we've really been able to, as a body, as a governing body, been able to bring these priorities forward, and it's very exciting when you have like-minded folks who understand it and get it kind of across, across our council in different ways. We had a great conversation about our ATP in the previous council meeting as well, and you know, if I never had to drive a car again, I would just love that, so I find it to be something that I don't enjoy, and I like to just outsource that as often as I can to whoever is willing to do that. So these are the ideas and the innovation and the conversations we truly need and appreciate having with you all, but you really are the leaders. I want to echo Councilmember Arias's comments, and Bert, thank you for being here to advocate. It's, it truly, I was moved. I mean, it is incredible that mobility is for everyone, and when we design and we keep in mind those who are, you know, visually impaired, there's language barriers, there, folks, you know, if we're not able to read a sign, how can we make sure we're using the symbols that everyone can identify? All of these different techniques and tactics that help everyone in a community feel safe, and when we make our community safer for those who are most vulnerable, which, you know, I consider those with a, that are different, have diverse abilities, but also children and elderly, then it lifts all of us, and I do feel that with folks' comments today and the work that we're going to keep moving forward, that we'll achieve that and we'll continue to work towards it. So thank you for advocating in your classroom. Thank you for being longtime advocates, and thank you for challenging, you know, the culture that we are not familiar with yet, and folks might think that there aren't folks who only cycle. It is important to know that there are folks that just walk or just cycle, and that is a choice, and especially in a challenging environment that is not yet designed for it. So as our city continues to grow, and some of our wards have very much undeveloped areas, this becomes a new model for us in designing for everyone, so just want to give my thanks to all of our community advocates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now move to public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit. Each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The Consent Calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearing Items 8A through D, Report Item 10A or New Business Item 12A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards regarding Consent Calendar Item 7.
Okay, and is there anything that you would like to do in introducing the Consent Calendar now?
Consent Calendar Item 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding Item 7G3, transmitting the PSVS Agreed Upon Procedures Report that was not yet available at the time the agenda was published.
Thank you. I haven't received any requests for any of our council members who wish to recuse themselves. Councilmember Vice Mayor Cor has requested that we pull Item 7D3 for separate consideration. Colleagues, does anybody else have a request? Seeing none, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve the Consent Calendar with the exception of Item 7D3.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now Vice Mayor 7D3.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the purchase of two fire engines that will, of course, apply to our, all of our wards. wards and our entire city. This resolution allows the City of Bakersfield to secure two fire engines for the Bakersfield Fire Department, and really is to think ahead and for the early acquisition of two fire engines. This past year, actually, I had the opportunity to hang out with our Bakersfield Fire Department when we welcomed three new fire engines to our fleet. These were, each engine, just fun facts that I learned along the way that I'd love to share. Each engine takes three years, took three years to make, and they're American-made. They're actually made in Wisconsin, in Appleton, and as someone who considers herself an honorary resident of Wisconsin from just three years of living there, I was very proud that they were made in Wisconsin and were an American product. But I was a little upset that it took so long to make. Of course, it's a craft, it is a well, it is a kind of a moving fire station, so to speak. It's a mobile fire station, and it needs to be equipped and ready to do just about I'm excited that we are in the process of this early acquisition of these two new engines, but I do think that we need more investment in our Bakersfield Fire Department, and we need it urgently. Everyone here in the room and folks watching are no strangers to the fires that are affecting our neighbors down south. In fact, our Bakersfield firefighters, as well as our Kern County firefighters, were assisting and helping out their colleagues from across the nation, across the country, across the world even, across borders, as we try to contain this fire. And just today, we have a new fire that is affecting our neighbors very south of us. The Five Freeway is shut down, and Castaic is being evacuated. So, these growing concerns are on everyone's minds. I've had so many constituents reach out to me as well since the fires in the LA region, asking, what is the condition of our fire department? Are we equipped? What if something of this sort was to happen in the City of Bakersfield? Are we ready? What are the conditions of our fire hydrants? So many different questions, and in my years so far in the council and getting to spend time at our different fire stations and spend time with our firefighters, I have, you know, just, I've had the same questions as well. And if you've ever spent the day at a fire station or with our fire guys, you know that they would do this without a salary. This is in their heart, and taking care of their communities, literally walking into fires for us, for our residents, is something that they would do in a heartbeat, and it doesn't take, it doesn't take a salary for them to do it. But I do think that it's time that we, as a council and city, also do our part and catch our city department, our fire department up, to have the abundance of resources that they need to literally walk into fires for us, for our residents, rather than working with just enough to make do. So today, I'd like to make the referral for our city to develop a fire master plan and begin the design process for a new fire station in the City of Bakersfield, particularly looking at South Bakersfield as our city grows south, and really determine where our areas of need are. And we've done different studies that evaluate our areas of cover, but this would be the first fire master plan that we do, and I feel it should include all of the elements. I think we should look at fire master plans of other cities, absolutely consult, and take the direction of our fire department and leadership there, and make sure that we're still meeting that area of cover and what the pressing needs are. I think this is urgent, and it should be added to our next, our upcoming budget cycle, and I'd like us to look at opportunities within PSVS to fund the design of our fire master plan and, as well as beginning that design process for the new fire station, or come back with new opportunities of, or the buckets of, you know, dollars of where this could come from. But this is absolutely urgent, and we are living it, and so many folks in our community have been so generous in helping with our neighbors in the LA region. So I feel we, it's time we update our infrastructure within our city. And we have great examples locally as well. We've built a substation at the Greystone Park, for example. I do, I would like for our community development, Housing and Community Development Committee to also explore how we add, within our development codes, the, when we master plan communities, you know, a substation can sit next to a park, next to a school, next to a substation for our police department. This should be really the model that we follow, so that we don't fall so behind again. I want to say the last time we built a fire station was over 15 years ago, maybe. I might not have the exact number, but that feels way too long, and I think our calls to service will reflect the urgent need as well. So we've built great product already, and I think it's time we explore that as well. We've actually got a design process going for a park right now. Anton Giovanni Park would welcome a substation or a station, we've got plenty of land there. But I'd like us to be creative in coming up with this plan, but I would like this to come back quickly and urgently. So I just want to appreciate our Bakersfield Fire Department Chief and those who risked their lives to go and help our neighbors down south, as well as our Kern County firefighters. Thank you. Thank you to your department. We appreciate you, we thank you, and we love you. So, thank you for keeping our community protected and safe. Jenny, I don't know, were you signaling at me? Okay, sorry. Okay, got it. Sorry, I was like, are you waving at me for information? But that'll conclude my referral. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I see a couple requests to speak, but I'm going to ask, Chief, we've received a lot of questions from our constituents, just about the fires. Are we prepared? If you could give us a very brief update on that, and just raise the mic, please.
Yes, Mayor, go. So, the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fire, we have to realize that that was really kind of the perfect storm coming together. We had red flag events down in LA at that time. We also had a lot of vegetation. That vegetation was very dry, and, of course, the fuel bed was very receptive, and we had a fire start. And when you have sustained 15 mile an hour winds with gusts of 70 to 100, it's very difficult to fight. That fire, the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fire, we're actually spotting a half to three-quarters of a mile in front of them. And when we start talking about water systems and things like that, when you hook up 100 fire engines to water systems, there, it's very difficult to design a system to handle that much water flow out of it. So, can that happen here in Bakersfield? Potentially, yes. Is it likely? No, but it's not something that we should take lightly. We should definitely prepare for that, and making sure that we do everything we can.
Are we prepared?
Are we prepared? Is there more to do? Yes, we can do more, certainly. And those two fires are going to change the California Fire Service, for sure. We're going to, I can see prevention being a big issue, developing fire-safe communities, prepositioning, which they did have equipment prepositioned down there. Governor Newsom has made, for the past couple years, around $25 to $40 million available for fire departments to preposition equipment during certain events, red flag events like we had there, flooding events and things like that. And California is very good at doing that. One thing that I will say is, California is the best, or better than anybody in the world, as far as responding to disasters, because we do it all the time. We respond to wildfires, we respond to flooding, mudslides and things like that. There is no other place that has the better resources than California. If we look at LA County, there are 29 departments down there. Easily a couple hundred fire engines were responded or deployed to those fires, and they still had issues, as we know, fighting those fires. So, yes, there is more we can do, for sure, and some more preparing we can do, and we can definitely take a look at that. And I appreciate Vice Mayor Corr's attention to those factors.
Thank you. Do we have water in our fire hydrants? We get asked that, I get so many of those questions. We do now.
We do have water in our fire hydrants.
And we are preparing for the worst. Is that right?
We are preparing for the worst. We have an emergency operations plan that we will hopefully update soon. We also work on a daily basis with Cal Water. Anytime we get a large fire, we are in contact with Cal Water for boosting pressures and things like that. So, we work very closely with the water company, and we also maintain and test our hydrants every year.
Thank you. And information is provided through Ready Kern. Thank you, Chief. I see Councilmember Arias, then Councilmember Coleman have requests to speak. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to move approval for Item 7D3. But secondly, I just want to say that I appreciate Vice Mayor's foresight and interest in this topic. I think it is incredibly timely that we have these types of conversations. Just today, a fire broke out in the Hughes Community near Castaic, and within two hours, 5,000 acres have been moved into the at-risk category and are evacuating from their homes. That is how quickly these things can move, and I think it's incredibly important for us to be prepared for that moment, if, in fact, it ever does come to the City of Bakersfield. When it comes to the budget, we've seen since 2018, when Measure N passed, that our Bakersfield Fire Department should receive an award, a plaque, a medal for being the most modest department, because oftentimes, they are the ones asking for the least amount of resources as it relates to budget requests. But I agree. We know that there's a huge need for additional fire stations. We need to start the planning, we should have started the planning years ago, but better late than never, let's get a jumpstart on that. Let's start looking at particular sites that we can utilize and leverage for future fire stations and start planning for the future. The other piece that I wanted to lift up is that we have an agreement through a joint powers agreement, a JPA, with our county counterparts. And while I don't know the details and the status of that particular agreement, I think it's important, particularly since we have a new council, for staff to prepare a presentation to educate us on what is in that JPA, educate us on whether or not that JPA meets the current needs of our current Bakersfield Fire Department, and really help empower this council to negotiate a contract that works for our community to keep it as safe as possible. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Corr for bringing this matter up. Chief, first of all, Chief, thanks for giving us that update, because you really boiled down to that one question, do we have water in the hydrants, right? But Vice Mayor Corr hit on a really good point, and it's something I've been talking about, not only for the fire department, but for the police department as well, is that we need to future-proof these departments. And so, you know, and that's not just equipment and fire stations, but also manpower. You know, it takes, by my estimate, it takes three years to train a firefighter to really know his job and be out reliable on the street by himself, and probably five years or more for a police officer. And so we need to be looking ahead more than we are, and we need to, and I'm going to be talking about this during we go through the budget process coming up soon, is making sure that we have the resources committed for hiring people for the future in what I call future-proofing. And so, I look forward to seeing your report that the Vice Mayor requested, to see what the fire department looks like. You know, we're doing a new master plan, but we never talked about, you know, what are we going to do about staffing for police and fire to meet those objectives? So, I'm very interested to hear those. So, Vice Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. I really appreciate it. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Arias mentioned the JPA, and I had some time ago, I think, a year or so ago, when we were going through the budget presentation, or when we looked at where the fire stations were, and there are no City of Bakersfield fire stations in Ward 4. There are county fire stations, and I think that City of Bakersfield citizens in Ward 4 should have a city fire station, and I know that's part of the JPA, and that discussion to be part of this would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Coleman for bringing up something I was just too excited to share as well, but the same request, when this report comes back, including what the staffing needs are, have those been stagnant? What are the real, what is that number? What are the real needs of our fire department in terms of staff? Because it's true, we can have the infrastructure, but if we don't have the people, and we don't know, and we're not recruiting in the right places or in the right ways to fulfill those roles, you know, that would be incomplete. What are call volumes? What do those look like? I think it's very important for the public to know and residents to know that call volumes have just exponentially increased for the fire department. And an emergency operations plan was mentioned. I'd love an update on that and what the needs are there in finishing, developing, updating that. So, those are what I would add, but thank you, Councilmember Coleman, for adding those, and agreed on getting an update and education on the JPA for the points that Councilmembers Smith and Arias brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion on 7D3? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearings, Item 8A through 8C for approval.
At this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the Consent Calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the item from the Consent Calendar hearings. Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item? Seeing none, at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through C is closed. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve Consent Calendar Hearing Items 8A through 8C for approval.
Thank you for the motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion was approved, with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports, Item 10A. Update to the council on the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, 2025 to 2030 Consolidated Plan for the City of Bakersfield.
Thank you. Before we begin, please note that if you're here to speak on Reports Items 10A, the city clerk will call for public statements after staff's presentation. Each speaker will be limited to a two-minute time limit. There will be a 20-minute time limit per report item. Assistant City Manager Helen?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Director Byers here to share with her the presentation.
Welcome. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. The item for, before you today is an update on our consolidated plan process, an analysis to impediments to fair housing choice and the citizen participation plan. I'm going to be going through what is our consolidated plan, and also a couple of these other items for our timelines under the requirements established by HUD. So, our consolidated established by HUD. So our consolidated plan, it's required by Housing and Urban Development in order to receive some of our funding every five years. It documents the community needs. It does require that we go out to the community and have a lot of outreach and input from the community, and so it identifies the strategy. There are certain topics that we have to identify specifically, and that's housing and homelessness, economic development, public facilities, and infrastructure and public services. So HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable, inclusive communities and quality, affordable homes for all. We are an entitlement city because we have a population greater than 50,000, which means we are entitled to receive CDBG funding annually. The funding sources that we have specifically, we have our Community Development Block Grant, which we refer to as CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, which actually City Council took action on some home funding in the previous public hearing. We have Emergency Solutions Grant, and then we have the Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS called HOPWA. Our consolidated plan development, we did a variety of outreach, and I'm going to go over that a little bit more in a second. From that, we have some draft consolidated plan goals set on the feedback that we gathered, and that's why we're standing before council today, to ensure that council also knows about the goals, but also approves of those goals. So our anticipated resources, we do this over the next five-year period based off of this fiscal year, and so over the next five years, we are anticipated to receive close to $34 million. CDBG or this HUD funding fluctuates every year, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, but it has remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years. So we are talking about almost $34 million over the next five years. The analysis of impediments to fair housing, this is a requirement, it's also a requirement by the state as part of our general plan update and housing element, that we do this analysis of impediments to affirmatively further fair housing. And so it evaluates a lot of our programs. It evaluates how our local residents are receiving housing, and just making sure that landlords aren't utilizing prejudicial policies. And so it provides steps to remove or lower the barriers to fair housing choice. And so that was one of the things we worked on in this process, is this analysis of impediments. So what does the community engagement process? It was pretty robust. We had three community workshops. I do have staff attending tonight. Nina Carter, she leads our community development program. We also have Adriana and Daniel, and they were present at several community workshops. We had two in person, one online. They met with our partner organizations. There were one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders. We presented at meetings. We did have surveys, both online and paper, in English and Spanish, and here we are tonight with the informational presentation to City Council, which is one of the requirements. We are within the 30-day public comment period, and will be bringing back an item in May. So we developed a consolidated plan website that is located on the City of Bakersfield Economic Development. We had a press release. We worked with our marketing team, had some social media. We emailed information. Like I said, we provided those surveys in paper and online, and then had some news and radio interviews. We worked with our 39, we worked with 39 community partners from 17 organizations. We met with 37 different residences. We also had, in our survey, we did receive almost 500 responses, which is kind of sad when you think, oh, we have 412,000, but that was a great number. I think our goal was 250 responses, and so we were able to double that through all of our engagement. So some of the questions we asked, and these are the results of those surveys, what are the areas of need that people wanted to see these $34 million of funding go towards? And so 78% did respond with affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, we're not just talking about low-income housing. Affordable housing is making sure that our residents aren't cost burden. Cost burden is what's considered when our residents are paying more than 30% of their income towards their housing. And so this was an area of need most identified. 65% wanted to ensure that we continue to have services to the homeless community, economic development, job creation, and that's going to come up again in just a second. Our public services, 47%. Community facilities, making sure that we have facilities that our residents can utilize, infrastructure. We utilize our CDBG frequently for safe routes to school, for sidewalks, for those kind of things. And that's the infrastructure, curb getter sidewalks, that's the infrastructure we're referring to, and then also accommodations for those with special needs. These are the ones that came out as being what the community was most interested in. So we had a couple of themes that ran throughout affordable housing, like I just mentioned, having affordable rental housing, but also first-time homebuyers. There's starting to be more and more emphasis towards residents wanting to have that wealth-building activity of homebuyer or being a homeowner. But there are concerns about increased rental costs or increased housing cost. We've talked about this a couple of times. Since COVID, we've had a 40% increase. We are the second highest in the state of California for our rental market increase in cost. We've had 40% increase in home value, which is great when you're the one that owns the home, not so great when you're the one who wants a home. Addressing homelessness continues to be a concern of our community. But economic development, this kind of ranked a little bit higher than what it has in the past. Having job training, living wage, we've found that our living wage isn't increasing at the same rate that our housing is increasing. And so that has become an area of concern for our community. We changed our proposed goals, and I don't know if it can really show up here. Hopefully, it shows up better in your printed copy to include in our affordable housing, more homeownership opportunities, prevent and reduce homelessness. It was a pretty statement, 2020 to 2025. But we want to make sure that we're increasing our support related to mental and behavioral health. There's lots of conversations. Prop 1 was passed. We have the B-CHIP application that we went for that's really targeting our homeless population's mental stability. And then improving our community infrastructure, increasing vital services, and so more specific than just this generic service, these vital services that we have, and including in our special population, our children and youth, as well as seniors and persons with disability. I'm sorry, I'm kind of losing my voice. Some of council hasn't heard me speak before. I don't, I don't always sound like this. So sorry that it's given up a little bit. So we did our community outreach in our surveys, September through November. The draft consolidated plan, like I said, that's out for review, was created in December of 2024. We're having this outreach with council right now, and this was a public hearing. Our submission to HUD has become a little bit clouded. So HUD likes to do this thing that we have to every year for our action plan, not tell us what our funding is. But we still have to move forward with all of our public hearing, all of our information gathering, and so they've done it again, that we cannot submit to HUD until we actually receive this year's funding. And so that's why the submission to HUD is May or June, dependent on when we receive those numbers from them. With that, we did include some proposed amendments to our citizen participation plan. Our citizen participation plan is, like I said, an earlier item tonight was a public hearing for home funds, that we had to do a substantial amendment to add a project to that. Currently, we do public hearing notices in English and Spanish. We provide a 30 days to the public opportunity to review. And also, every year, we have to do an action plan. And so the citizen participation plan is really how we reach out to our community, and it guides that. HUD has included that social media is a valid form of public engagement, and so those are some of our amendments in our citizen participation plan. If you have any questions or comments for the program, I also have staff available to help answer those.
Thank you, Director Byers. I hope you feel better. And now, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
No public speaker cards have been received.
Thank you. Colleagues, any requests to speak? I don't see any yet. Councilmember Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for doing this, doing this hard work. I really appreciate it. And this might be a broader question for you and for maybe the City Manager's office. What can we do to get more community engagement? I mean, you're basing this on, you know, right around 1% of the population, and in ordinary statistical analysis, that would be too small a sample group to make any conclusions from. But we're kind of forced to draw these conclusions based on this small sample size. So what can we do as a council and as a community to get more engagement?
I think we find that question across the board. Director Burns right now is doing a general plan amendment or a general plan update, which guides the development of the city for the next 30 years, and we continue to have very small community engagement. I don't know, Mr. Helen, if you have some comments.
Yeah, I can address a couple of things that we're trying to do. I think, I think the ability to reach people where they are, meaning everybody's on social media, right? 90%, 95% of people have some sort of social media touch. So if we can get people to respond to an online survey through social media, that's part of that additional outreach. I will say, my, the past place I worked at, the size of the population there was 2 million people, and we had 200 people that responded. So even smaller sample size that we were making decisions on our HUD funding with that same outreach. So the fact that we're getting a little bit larger participation on this effort is a good thing. I think the other part of what we struggle with is we're competing with a lot of different things right now in terms of people are not interested in telling us how we should spend our homelessness dollars, or our ESG dollars, or our housing dollars. And so it is trying to get maybe more education out there. We need to hear, we want to hear from you. We need to hear from you, which we continue to do. We continue to get education messages out. We've got our podcast. We've got other ways that we can transmit and get information out to let people know. I think Director Burns can also share some insights that he's had during the general plan process and the housing element process of other, we try the all-of-the-above method in terms of trying to get more engagement. But the response of close to 500 responses on the size of city, I think, is pretty typical.
Director Burns, do you wish to comment?
I think through our outreach with the general plan, housing element, we were seeing sample sets of like 100, 200. So actually, 500 is actually a pretty successful outreach compared to what we've done with others. And I can say, our team from RENCON, Cassandra Gell, she's finished her PhD in, basically, in outreach, was her thesis there. So we have someone that's very versed in it, and that's type sample set. So I think what Ms. Byers' group has done is actually quite, quite great.
Thank you. We will take that compliment.
Let me ask you a further question about the responses you did get. Have you developed any analysis of the responses themselves? Like, I'm not saying ask for names, but any socio-demographic information that you have on the people that did respond, did engage?
We do. It was about 20 questions. We asked age. We asked zip code. We asked, just trying to identify, like, where are we receiving the majority of comments? I think that's important, because if you have engagement, it's typically the people who care about what it is that you're talking about. And so by targeting or by finding out what zip codes people lived in, we were really able to see who cared the most. I believe it was 06, 93306, was first or second. And so the east side of the community did respond more than the west side. And so from that, you try to determine, do we need to be doing more engagement in other areas? Those are the type of things that we evaluate. We didn't ask salaries, or we didn't ask income levels.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. So from the city of Bakersfield to everyone who's listening online and to all of your friends, we invite you to give your input. We invite you to engage with us. We want to hear from you, as together we shape our future. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the affordable housing being the top item, as always, and there are things that we can do about that and things that the developer community can do about it. And as we've stated, you know, we want to streamline permits. We want to not have any more regulation or fees than necessary, and, you know, help make it easier to have smaller lots. And I think, as we talked about last week, was about the down payment assistance. Also encourage the development community to build smaller, more affordable housing. I always mentioned tonight that we've lost first-time homebuyer, and there's multiple reasons for that, but one of the reasons is we just build bigger houses. And so, you know, smaller houses on smaller lots and more affordable can serve more of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Great job. I just wanted to echo a couple of comments from my colleagues real quick. Number one, yes, Councilmember Smith is correct. You know, affordable housing was identified as the number one issue, and I keep saying it over and over again. We need to continue to induce more affordable housing development from City Hall and build more housing much more cheaply, much more quickly, and much higher quality for all residents. And so I'm going to continue to press that along with my colleagues. And to Councilmember Coleman's question about outreach, it's an interesting question, because it actually came up when we discussed some of our outreach strategies related to the housing element, I believe. And one of the things that I've observed from the city is that we're all doing wonderful things, and there are all these departments that are reaching out to the community for various different things. In fact, within the last year, we had outreach efforts related to the ATP, the housing element, the Parks Master Plan, now this plan. I mean, there's a lot of requests for feedback out there. I think that there's a need for some better coordination among departments so that we can communicate clearly that we're not, you know, spreading ourselves way too thin, but actually, you know, being able to work together so that we can more effectively receive feedback that's actually quality feedback. And because I think it's hard for some when we're hearing from this department one day, and another department another day, and someone's having a community meeting at Central Park one night, and then the next week, it's about a different topic. So, you know, for lots of us in the community, when we hear from the city, it's all just the city. We don't, can't differentiate between this department and that department. It would be nice if we can better coordinate so that we think about what the end user is experiencing in terms of these requests. The other thing that I think is really important is that we really look at, and this came up maybe four years ago now, when I first made this referral, is that we look at a pro-motora strategy, where we actually have people within City Hall whose responsibility it is to actually go door-to-door and knock on doors, communicate with residents, ask them survey questions, and get a better sense of what is happening in our community. And then also, the second piece of that is communicate with our residents about the services. is communicate with our residents about the services that we actually provide, about, you know, our mobile app and how they can access that, about all of these wonderful programs that we have for residents throughout the community. I think that would be very, very helpful, and it would actually strengthen our relationship with residents throughout the city. And then also, I think ultimately, help us improve that response rate in any survey in the future. But anyway, that's it. Great job.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor motion?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you, Director Byers.
Motion was approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business item 12A, approval of council committee's calendar for January through December 2025.
Thank you. Please note, if you're here to speak on the new business item 12A, the city clerk will call for public statements after staff's presentation. Each speaker will be listed, limited to a two-minute time limit. There will be a 20-minute time limit per report. Mr. Howland?
I'll have our city clerk touch on this item.
Mayor Go, council, the council committee calendar was developed around various meetings and with consultation with the chairs of the committees and is awaiting your approval.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding this new business item?
Mayor Go, no speaker cards have been received.
Thank you. Colleagues, do you have any comments? Seeing none? Vice Mayor? Oh, are you? Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question was, you know, I love the color drawing, but I don't remember what committees I'm on. Okay. Well, I asked for it last time, and then we weren't given that because...
Yeah, we can get a calendar just for you on what your committees are.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was my only question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the calendar for our committees.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Counsel and mayor state.
Thank you. Councilmember Bashir Tash.
I have a few things that I'd like to say. One of them is in regards to the outreach. I think that Councilman Coleman can back me up on this. The most successful outreach that we've seen and been a part of was the campaign that we ran to win the seats that are in front of us. And that took a lot of door-to-door. And it also, I mean, we had, I had multiple events where 10 people would show up, 15 people would show up, even with free breakfast burritos offered and such. But I got the rawest information and really got to know my constituents and the constituents of our city by knocking on their door. I think that, I mean, that was over 10,000 people. And that was just for me to get elected. So I think when it comes to making huge decisions that impact our city, we're never going to get the results. 500 people, even though that's a decent amount, is not a good amount to base multimillion-dollar decisions on for our... I think they deserve better than that. And so I think that we need to adjust how we get community input and not just people that are affected by it, that are fired up about whatever's going on at the park and needs input. Because most people are at home, raising families, taking care of their homes, working their jobs, and they don't really have time to go to events. But you catch them at home, and whether they're on your side of the fence and your belief system or not, you're going to get some information that is, reflects our constituents, which is who we represent. And then the second thing that I'd like to just kind of, it's more of a pondering point that was a big basis for me running for city council. And that gets tied into like even the fire safety and pedestrian safety and walkability. And like, I agree with all of that. And I have a bike, and my kids have bikes, and fire is important. And our fire department having the resources they need to protect us is important. But both of those things, half the problems that stem surrounding those things are a result of a lack of strong public safety. When we approved the measure to increase our tax, it was worded to the constituents that it would be an increase in our police department so that we would feel that public safety actually impacting our lives, which hasn't been felt. The groups of 50 bicycle riders that go down the street with no helmets on that turn into some type of, that should be something that gets held accountable. Helmets would mitigate a lot of the injuries and deaths that happen. And most people don't wear helmets anymore. Or the drivers that speed around and close intersections and spin donuts. I mean, all of those things are directly affected by public safety, which would improve walkability and bikability and all of that stuff. But we have to hold people that break the law accountable for that kind of stuff. Fires, half the fires in our city have been done by transits. My business has been set on fire. I've reported multiple fires, vacant buildings, property owners that just let their buildings go to just nothing, not being held accountable. And so all of these issues stem from a lack of felt presence in public safety. If we want a community that's going to be pro-business where business owners, like myself and other people on the council, want to create businesses and grow and provide jobs that pay for people to get into houses, business owners have to feel like their assets are going to be protected. Their staff is going to be protected. The shopping center is going to be protected. Again, that's public safety. And I think that half the stuff that we make decisions on and have issues with stems from public safety and people being able to feel like they're safe enough to go out. People feel like they're safe enough to develop, to grow their staff. So that's enough of my soapbox. But I just, I would like for everybody to think about that. When you think about the issue that comes before us, what's it stemmed from? I don't want a bigger dustpan to clean up the mess in front of us. I want to put, we need to hold people accountable so that we don't have a mess to sweep up in the first place. And that starts with, I mean, public safety over and over and over again, and making sure what people voted that very, very slim marginally passed is being done for what the constituents were led to believe. Not just throwing money at random things. There's got to be some accountability. And I believe it starts with us making good decisions. Again, I'm not saying that, you know, I don't like any of the things that were set before us. But if we dial it back and we take it to a granular level, I think that a lot of it stems from a stronger presence in public safety would fix a lot of these issues and would also keep us, you know, being financially responsible with taxpayer money, whether it's a grant or local. I mean, it was all built up via taxpayers. And, you know, that's important. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Bashir Tash. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I highlight a piece of legislation that I want us to take a look at, I just want to respond to Councilmember Bashir Tash's comments. I think hearing kind of the essence of your comments, I think we agree. I think that we have to take a balanced approach to not only, you know, improve the infrastructure of our local community, but also to make sure that we're holding folks accountable. I think there are many, including myself on this dais, that have been really frustrated, you know, certainly myself since 2020, seeing skyrocketing crime numbers early on. Thankfully, because of the Calvert program and other efforts in the community, we've been able to bring that down. But, you know, at the end of the day, if you talk to anybody, the biggest of the police department, prior to this past election cycle, there have been significant challenges with booking particularly repeat offenders who have ravaged places like the Valley Plaza, which is in Ward 1. You know, we see this as, you know, not only an organized retail theft issue, but you're right. Folks do not, at least prior to Prop 36, did not feel that they were going to be held accountable for committing those actions. And I am really grateful for the district attorney's advocacy to get Prop 36 across the finish line. I think it's going to significantly change, I think, the attitude of some of these criminals. So I just want to say I appreciate that. And I think we certainly share a brain on those issues. The other issue that I wanted to highlight is that the United States Department of Justice just yesterday, last night, in fact, issued a memo to many of its employees to actually charge the U.S. Attorney's Office to hold local and state officials accountable if, in fact, they do not enforce the federal government's policies and new policies on immigration and deportation. I think that that is particularly troubling, not even from just a political lens, but I think it's deeply troubling because at the state level in California, we are beholden to SB 54, which is a sanctuary state policy, which is in direct conflict with much of the policies that we're seeing coming out of this incoming administration at the federal level. So I just ask that, you know, whether it's in-house staff to monitor that particular piece of policy or even leveraging our contracted lobbyists to monitor it and provide some guidance on how we can navigate ourselves and make sure that we are in compliance with the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to pile on, I guess, on the Councilmember Bashir Tash on accountability and enforcement. We've heard numerous times how our police department, you know, arrest the same guy twice in one day. You know, we arrest him, and the sheriff will not put them in jail. And it's not because of state law. It's not because of federal law. It's because the sheriff says he's full. And I know we've been working for some time on different solutions, but it's time to do something in that area to get these people off the streets. They're repeat offenders. They can and should be in jail. Our police department does a good job. They arrest them, and they need some time out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to my council colleagues for all of their very important feedback. My comments are of a lighter tone, so I'm taking a different direction. But I've been thinking a lot about just our community arts programs and initiatives and just how meaningful different arts programs are to placemaking. And I was driving by the Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce building, and it just looks so wonderful. It just brightened up that corridor. And then there's individual projects just happening in different parts of our city. In the auto mall, for example, we've had, we have some new installations coming. But I want there to always, I want us to always be thinking about what we can do more around placemaking. And I'd love to request a presentation be made to our council on the economic impacts and positive impacts of the arts within our city. And I know my colleagues, some of my colleagues have worked on this initiative in the past. But I could really use this presentation, and I'd love for this to be something that we center and prioritize as a council. But all good things. So, thank you.
Thank you. The arts give wings to the soul, flight to the imagination, and life to everything else. Thank you, Councilmember and Vice Mayor. And next, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bashir Tash made some really excellent points about public safety and how a lot of these issues that we discussed really are rooted in public safety. And it's something that many of us have felt strongly about, as Councilmember Arias mentioned, for quite some time. You know, one of the reasons why I led the charge for Measure N was to enhance our public safety within the city because we were declining. We saw fewer and fewer officers per capita, and we were unable to respond to the requests. And we saw police response times rising and no real resource in order to get to those needs. And so to date, I'm really excited because in 2018, we had 389 sworn officers. To date, we have 480 sworn officers. That includes the current academy. But, you know, because of Measure N, we've been able to actually host or hold two academies per year, every single year. We've actually hired over 350 police officers. Of course, we've lost officers because they've retired, they move away, they change professions. There are a lot of reasons why we lose officers. We can't necessarily control that. But we can control the aggressive recruitment effort and the academies and the concerted effort to get that net gain up. But we are, we are very close to getting to that net gain of 100 police officers. And I'm excited about that. I'm sure that we will get that done within the next year or so. Again, we can't control for people leaving the department. But I want to say another, you know, good job to our human resources department, the police department, and so many other folks at City Hall who are working steadfast on this particular initiative and have not lost sight of that goal. But thank you so much for your comments. I think it's well said. And I'm looking forward to our continued conversation as we address those needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. During this historic week, we unite as fellow Americans, as the people of Bakersfield, to forge a future as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are so blessed to live in this great country where we can share different perspectives. But I would call upon all of us, no matter what our perspectives might be, let us unite in valuing, in respecting one another. Let's move forward as Americans together and forge that wonderful future for our community and for our nation together. I had the privilege this last week of attending the meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the annual meeting, where we discussed priorities that were common to us across the nation: housing, public safety, infrastructure, technology, innovation, homelessness, and jobs. And you'll find how much we all had in common as we came together. What a privilege it has been to give voice to Bakersfield. And they even knew about Bakersfield. I had the privilege of meeting with Congressmen Valadeo and Fong, and then also with Senator Schiff and Padilla, actually a one-on-one with each of them. And that was in addition to all of us coming together to give voice to our cities. And we are just so blessed to live in this nation where we can all come together. So that's what I encourage us as we move forward in 2025. Let's continue to honor, let's continue to respect one another, to value one another as one nation, as one city, under God, indivisible. And with that, we stand adjourned at 6:42.